It's o'clock for our city council regular meeting. I would like to welcome everybody that is here. We really appreciate you taking out time to be with us and hopefully we won't keep you long. At this time, let us stand for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna put in the word, Representative, would you pray for us?
I'd be glad to. Let's pray. God, we just simply thank you for allowing us to gather tonight.
Yes, Lord.
God, you are so good to us. You brought us through another day. We thank you for that. God, we again thank you for allowing us to live where we live. God, we see around all around the places that we see on TV and read about and aren't as fortunate as we are to live where we do. And God, we thank you for the men and women who are serving on this city council. Pray to continue to bless them, give them strength and knowledge that only you can give them, give them wisdom, allow them to make the right decisions for the people of this community. And be with the folks that work here in this great organization. Pray to just bless them, keep them safe, allow them to do the job, and pray for this community. We enjoy living here, we love this community, we love you, we praise you, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Now for our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. All right. I want to like again, I want to thank you all for being here. And I know you see on the agenda, we have a special presentation by the mayor. There's something special about this little town of Pickens. To where you have noticed the hard work and dedication and unity that abounds. I was talking to this gentleman here, and we talked about in the seventies when my father preached the revival at First Baptist, Dr. Batson was there. It gave us an opportunity of unity, and sometimes we let things get in the way of that, and we're not gonna do that here in Pickens. I ran on one Pickens, one love, and even though it's been mocked at times, I really believe that, and that's what I really stand for. I thank you all for being here, but first I want Representative Davy Hyatt to come up. He made the announcement that he's gonna be retiring real soon. Look at this young man. He ain't get, he shouldn't be retiring.
I was a whole lot younger before I started.
Little less gray hairs, huh? But I've been knowing Representative Hyatt all of my life, and it goes generational. My father knew his father, and I've known his work ethic and what he stands for, and I just want him to know that we appreciate you for all that you've done for Pickens. I know you're representative for Dakersville and Liberty and all surrounding areas, but we at Pickens are proud because it was one of our own that was in, up in Columbia, and it made us proud, and we're really proud of that. And you really exemplified your service to the state and to your area of representation. This is just a token that I want to give you for one thing that you've done, and that was the water tower. We've been talking about the water tower, complaining about the water tower, trying to get it done, and then we finally made a decision to get it done. Then Representative Hyatt said, okay, now that you've made up your mind, I can help you. And he's helped us to be able to get it. Isn't it beautiful? It gave us an opportunity to get it looking that good, and it was because of your efforts. Being the majority leader, another thing that makes us even more prouder, you made it possible, and I want to thank you as a friend, and I want to thank you as the mayor of this little town. You have done a Herculean task, and you've done more than people will ever know by pushing paper and getting things done in Columbia that we don't even know about, but I thank you for standing as a representative for us. So this time, I want to present this in honoring Representative Davy Hyatt, the Spirit of Pickens Award for your dedication to restoring the Pickens Water Tower, this day, February the 10th, 2025.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you again. I know you got to go, but we appreciate you.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Pat Mulkey.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, come on up here. This man right here, when you talk about growing up together.
Yeah.
We grew up together, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
All through school. You know, when Hurricane Helene came in this area and went up into western North Carolina, it was bad, wasn't it? We were complaining about the things that have happened around here and how it was so hard to get everything back to normal. Pat and Barry, I'm gonna talk about in a minute, but Pat is still working, taking propane, taking trailers. If you've been on Facebook with both of these men, you will see they're still showing that spirit of Pickens, that we care about our neighbors, that we want to help where we can. A lot of us, because we not dealing with it anymore, it's probably gone out of our mind, but these two men are still working, and they're representing us well. I want to thank you, and I want to present this to Pat Mulkey, the Spirit of Pickens Award, for your dedication in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, this day, February the 10th, 2025. Thank you, brother. Barry Crawford, come on up here. You can't say nothing until later on. You got your name down there to say something.
Yeah. I wanted to come down here to get in some kind of trouble.
No, that's why I'm giving you this before you talk, so you won't get too hard on me.
Yeah.
But Barry is the same thing with that Pat. He has still been working, helping people in western North Carolina, showing us the devastation that we sometimes don't get on the news, but he's letting us see that there's still more work to be done, that you have to be your brother's keeper. You have to care about what's going on, especially their physical needs, and he's been one, along with Pat, to go forth and do this as a representative of Pickens, not for any fanfare. If we didn't give him this, he'd still be doing it, and Pat also, but we want to recognize you because you got a big heart, both of you, and I thank you so much, and it gives an example of what Pickens is all about. You can have your differences, you can go a different political ideology, but when it really comes down to it, we're each other's neighbor.
That's right.
Especially in South Carolina and North Carolina. So Barry, I want to present this to you, Barry Crawford, the Spirit of Pickens Award, for your dedication in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, this February the 10th, 2025. Thank you, brother.
Thank you. Bless you. Pat, would you take a picture with me? I think we didn't got a picture. If you don't mind, can I say just thank you?
Yeah, but let me take a picture for a presentation. Get out your way. All right.
All right. You know, this ain't about me or Pat. This is about the people that's give, and I'm sure he'll tell you the same thing. I mean, we've had people from Nebraska, from Wisconsin, Memphis, Tennessee, I was on the phone with right out here in the parking lot, bringing another mobile home or camper out here, and I got two people coming tomorrow with two more campers to go up to Burnsfield, North Carolina. It's just a networking, you know, connecting people together, and those folks that's helped, I hope they watching some of them tonight. I mean, these churches around here, I can't start naming them because I'll forget somebody, but without them, we couldn't have done it. The community and Pat can tell you, the government part of it is just now starting to kick in. We hadn't seen it, and they still in bad shape up there. Just because they're cleaning the rivers, what I'm talking about, the Army Corps of Engineers up there cleaning the rivers now, that's still not helping these folks in their homes, that are not even their homes, they're campers. I still see five or six tents right there in Swananoa, and I mean, they're still a long way. Look, that happened in September 27th. Can you imagine being without power and water and having to run a generator that long when we just go two days or three days without it here? You gotta keep these people in your thoughts and prayers. We've represented Pickens well, I know we have. They know us up there, they know we down here, they know our citizens are helping, and man, I love this town, and I love these churches and this community around here, and all these people from other states that help, Fort Payne, Alabama, all over, they came, and we're lucky enough to have the market facility down there to get it, save a lot of that stuff up, and then when they call for it, we can get it out to them, and we're lucky to have that, and just keep these people in your thoughts and prayers about it. I mean, it's not over, it's a long way from over. The cleanup's just now happening, it should have happened two weeks after this, but it's just now happening, so that's all I wanted to say. It's not about me, I don't want to, I appreciate the award, I really do, I appreciate it, but it's so many other people behind me that's helped get us where we needed to be.
You're a good representative.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, sir.
All right, and you don't get to talk no more. Pat, come on, take a picture with me. Come on through here. Can you, okay, all right.
Oh, I needed the church center.
No. Hold it, hold it, hold that up, there you go. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, sir. Can I turn this on?
Uh, leave it on.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move further on to number three, number four, comments from citizens, Barry Crawford.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak. First of all, I wasn't even planning on this, but I just can't thank Davy Hyatt enough for what he's done for us down at the Market at the Mill. Guys, he's helped us out. We would not even ever started without that man, and I just can't thank him enough, and he's so involved with so much more than what we know, and I just wanted to publicly thank Davy for what he's done. But what I'm talking about tonight ain't nothing bad, I just want us, I love this town, and everybody in here does, or they wouldn't be in here tonight, right?
Right.
Okay, so what I'm coming to you tonight is, I've lived here all 55 years, and listen, next year, our country's gonna be 250 years old, right? We're gonna be 250 years old, that's a reason to celebrate. We are in here because of freedom tonight. We got the freedom to come and speak to you guys and say what we want to say, and I love it. We're, but here's what I want to do, or what I just want to throw at you guys. To get an early jump on, I think we should go all out next year in the city of Pickens, 4th of July. I think you guys should start setting a little bit aside of a budget, don't let easily and Liberty and all those people outdo us, go ahead and jump on it now.
That's right.
Let's get some things together, let's put a big banner, and let's celebrate our freedom in our little town right here, our small town living, let's get a jump on it a year ahead of time. Get whoever you got doing all this, the chamber, whoever, and get them on it, and do little things like the best decorated house in the city limits, which I'm sure it'd be out Cedar Rock Street somewhere, but anyway, do little things like that, entice the community and get everybody involved, kind of like the 1968 centennial they had here, you remember the whole?
I saw the pictures of that.
Let's all celebrate, it don't matter what side you on, forget all that, you're an American that day.
Yes, sir.
And come and celebrate, so I think it's something, I just wanted to put that out there, let's think about, I know that's a year out, and that probably don't mean a lot to some people, but if you start putting a budget for the carnival and the fireworks and all that, maybe we can make this thing work together, and anything we can do for you guys down at the market, parking or anything, you know, it's always there, that place is always there, no matter what kind of event you guys want to have, there's 110 acres down there, that you can use at any time, so that's all I wanted to say, and thank y'all for allowing me to speak.
All right, thank you so much, Barry. Okay, and we have Ms. Corretta Arnold.
Good evening, everybody. I just have a couple of things, I won't take too much of your time. One thing I want to ask you about the steel plates in front of the Market at the Mill, I think that's a state road, do y'all have any idea like when they're gonna pave the road or anything?
Do you have any knowledge of that?
Okay.
Dog, there we go. Yes, sir.
So the plates are there from a water leak, they wasn't making surface asphalt here in freezing temperatures. I actually called King Astor today, their plant's down for another week for servicing, but in the next week, soon as they start making service, we're gonna patch it.
Okay, okay, my second question is, did anyone find out when the warranty started on Secona Road, like for the repairs and stuff that they done after?
There we go.
Exactly one year, from the date of completion, exactly one year we have a warranty.
So what date is it, is it from when they started, did it, or when they completed?
From their completion date, I don't know it off the top of my head, but we had.
Okay, all right, thank you, Trey. And the last thing, what's the update on the Wood Creek Pump Station?
Hey, Trey, we're gonna cheat right here.
So the pumps are on their way, and they've made the discharge elbows, so we look, within two to three weeks, they'll be here performing work.
Okay, that's all right. I didn't mean to put everything on trade tonight, but.
But also tell them what's happening until the pumps get hit.
So our bypass pump, the float section went out yesterday, so right now, the mechanic will be here in the morning, but through the night, we're having to manually run the pump all night, so we've got somebody out there all night tonight.
Okay, anyway, thank y'all. I didn't mean to put everything on trade tonight, but thank you.
He's the one.
No, I'm right.
Thank you so much, Ms. Arnold.
You do it all the time.
He's big enough, he can handle it. Mr. Pat Mulkey.
First of all, I want to say thank you all for just thinking about me, but I'm not doing this for Facebook likes, I'm not doing this to be an influencer, I'm not doing this to draw attention to the Market of the Mill, you understand? I'm doing it because God is the way to go and to help. I'm humanitarian, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
God bless you. Now we're ready for the administrators' report. Mr. Tim O'Brien.
Well, it's good to see everyone this evening. Many of you appear to be very healthy, which you have not in recent days, so I'm glad that everyone's recovering, although Councilman Rogers is now down with the flu, so it's not over yet, and hopefully it's just gonna be one time around, and then we're all done. Just a few items to go through, I did send Council some information, just to be aware that we are, have a published request for proposals for building permit and inspection services, which currently are being provided by the county, but we're exploring taking that in-house, which as I mentioned in my note, the county is no longer doing that for most of the communities in the county. There are two remaining, us and I believe Norris or Six Mile, I'm not sure which one, and they're looking to get out of that business generally, so these costs, as I explained in the email, generally they are covered by the fees that would be paid, right now they're being paid to the county, but these firms typically take their fee out of what they charge the customer, and they share that with the city a small percentage, but basically it would be a revenue neutral move for us. So we'll continue exploring that and probably get deeper into it as we go through the upcoming budget process. Our auditors are in, and they were here last week, and they're here again this week, working on our delayed 2023, 2022, 2023 audit, and then shortly after that, 23, 24 will be up next, and we expect to be, and just background on this for everybody who's here and listening, the city had fallen behind prior to this council being seated, three years on audits, which is never a good thing. The audit firm was terminated and not replaced, and then when we got back in line, we've had to wait for their availability, as they, this, so far this year, we caught up on the 22, right now, we're working on the 23, and fingers crossed, we will have the 24 and be current by June 30, and Mandy's nodding her head, yes, so that will be a sight to behold, and we look forward to working with all those audited financials in place. So just an update on that. I had a update on the Secona Pump Station over there, which Trey just gave ably, we've been tweaking that and working on it pretty consistently. I know it has been unpleasant, if not unsanitary for the people in that neighborhood, we've struggled with it clearly, this is a case of, and we've had lots of conversation, deferred maintenance on a very old facility, we're gonna make it new again, hopefully get another 25 years out of it, but we're gonna plan to take care of it on a more routine basis, so maybe we even get 30 years out of it, but hopefully the smell will be gone very soon, so I look forward to that, because I've been out there and it, quite frankly, stinks pretty badly. Also, Trey and his crew are gonna be doing some, you know, we promised in-house waterline projects, beginning in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna start with Pendleton Street Extension, replacing the water lines there. A lot of times, we would have in the past used contractors to do this, but we have the skills and the materials in-house, so we're gonna go ahead and do that, and then that will be closely followed by Fox Squirrel Ridge Circle. Yeah, so we're gonna start doing some of those projects that we've got planned out. And then I just want to tip my cap to everybody on staff who has spent an inordinate amount of time in their godsend after disaster, but we're having weekly meetings with FEMA, and our final damage assessment from the storm is due March 8th, and the paperwork involved, the personal visits, the site inspections, the questions, the follow-up emails, the Zoom calls, sometimes, some days you wonder whether the relief is worth the, or if the juice is worth the squeeze, but I'm certain it will be. We're also going through, Ms. Hess has been dealing a lot with our insurance claims, which that's the first step, is determining what is covered by insurance, and then FEMA will help us with the difference on things that either aren't covered or aren't fully covered, and every department head has been painstakingly involved in this, but it's just a special pat on the back to Fire Chief Chris Elrod, who has coordinated disaster FEMA efforts with the city before, and he's been very helpful in making sure that all the documentation is in place and the record-keeping is second to none, so hopefully we'll have a final number of what we think our claims will be, obviously after that initial damage assessment is in March 8th, and I'll bring a report back to Council on what kind of reimbursements we're looking at for time, labor, materials to respond to that storm, and if there aren't any questions, that is my report.
Yes, ma'am.
Any update was asked this day about from recreation on will spring sports activities be able to continue even though the fields are still?
That is the plan, and the recreation folks have met numerous times with FEMA, we have put that on, they asked us, what are your highest priority items because of the scheduling issues? We did put that on a high priority. We've been given the go-ahead, and Council needs to be aware of this as well. Jonathan, our Recreation Director, there will be expenses that, at this point in the process, we believe that we have a path to reimbursement that can take some time, but in order to get things up and running and ready for the spring, we will go ahead and incur some of those expenses now with a pretty good faith that from our conversations with FEMA, we know exactly what they're gonna reimburse, so it'll be more of a do it now, we'll pay for it, and then they'll come back in and make us whole afterwards. But that's a long answer to the question, yes, we expect those fields to be playable, and they might take a little bit to grow back in, there's a lot of silt out there, anything to add to that?
They will be, or should be playable by the spring season, like you said, they there is a use of the silt and excess on all of the buildings and fencing still has repairs as needed, which should be completed over the next couple of weeks before spring season starts. Other than that, they will not be in the B League, but they will be playable and on the path to being back up to farm.
Awesome, thank you.
And one thing I've learned about Pickens and where we put our parks is as soon as we get them just right, they'll flood again.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, question for Tim. Tim, on the RFP for the code enforcement, is what's the county doing? Are they gonna give up their code enforcement personnel as well and go to?
No, sir, the county is, you know, obviously there's building permits and inspections in the county, unincorporated.
Right.
Areas as well, and they are seriously backed up, there's a lot of development in unincorporated areas, they've got a pretty heavy workload. This would just be for projects that are within.
The city.
The municipality.
Right, sure, okay.
Anybody have any other questions for the industry? Not, we'll move further to number six, approval of minutes. Would you like to approve the minutes for January the 13th, 2025? That's the regular meeting, and for January the 14th, 2025, special call meeting, and January the 21st, 20, nope, did we meet you? January the 21st, 2025, special call meeting.
Your clerk doesn't miss a beat.
I know, she's on it.
She's gotta figure that out.
All right, can I have a motion that we approve minutes as we?
Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed and I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the January 13th, 2025, regular meeting, the January 14th, 2025, special call meeting, and the January 21st, 2025, special call meeting.
Okay, it's been properly moved, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
All right, it's been properly moved and second, are you ready for questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, real quick question, is it proper to actually approve the minutes all at one go, all meetings, or should they be individually voted on?
It's, it can be.
It can, okay, that's typical.
We're falling within the rules.
Well, I don't know what the rule is for sure, so I'm asking the question.
Good question.
Yes, we can.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other question? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous with two members absent. Now we have discussion regarding Legacy Square. We have a draft before council, and I want to share it with everybody here dealing with first, Pickens First Baptist Church. I'm gonna read it, it was directed to me, but I want everybody to hear it. It says, "The Board of Deacons First Baptist Church, Pickens, has discussed your formal request to correct the issues with the water fountain at Legacy Square. The Board is open to entertain your requests under certain conditions. The following is a list of concerns and requirements that the church will expect addressed if a final agreement is to be reached. The fountain is on church property. Number two, the land will remain church property. The church is simply allowing the city to use the location for the fountain for the public good. The church will have the right to request the fountain." The church will have the right to request the fountain be removed in the future for any reason the church deems appropriate. Removal timeframe is determined after notice is given and in condition with the city, but not to exceed more than four months. The church will have final approval of the fountain design and repair work. The design must be kept simple, working within the framework of the existing fountain, plaza, and landscaping islands. No additional land will be allowed for fountain use. The fountain will remain small and not elaborate. Any lighting must remain simple with white lights only. The city will be responsible for all design costs. The city will be responsible for all costs associated with repair, construction, insulation of all fountain works, lighting, landscape, et cetera. The city will be responsible for all maintenance, repairs, services, utilities, and future costs associated with the fountain. The church will have full right of refusal for any future display associated with the fountain, plaza, and landscaping associated with Legacy Square Fountain. The city will be responsible for all costs associated with the removal of the fountain if removed by the city or asked to be removed by the church. This is an outline of intent and not considered an all-inclusive list of parameters expected prior to a final agreement. There's no agreement that has been made. Uh, we just wanted to see where the church was at, and we wanted to also talk to our council to see where we're gonna go further and move further with this. Um, at this time, I'm gonna open the floor for any discussion about the fountain.
Mr. Mayor, could you provide a little background to the fountain? Um, how, how did it come into existence? Who paid for it? What's there now?
Well, it was, um, an agreement by handshake and a dollar to lease the fountain years ago, uh, by, um, it was Mayor Kennimer, I believe. Um, there was no restrictions as far as the fountain was concerned. It was a partnership with the city of Pickens. They owned it, they leased it, um, for a year at a time. Um, it has been in use for many years. All of the bricks there that have been inscribed are inscribed with loved ones, mainly that have already passed away and just keeping the legacy of Pickens alive. Um, matter of fact, my little brother is on that, has a, has a, uh, brick on there, Francis Cipio. Um, it was a very good venture that everybody was truly a part of for the little town of Pickens at that time. So that's basically, in a nutshell, the history of it. Um, it was just an agreement with the city.
And, and just as a, it was just, it was created as just a memorial or just a?
Yes.
Just a, okay.
And the agreement with the city was between the deacons of the First Baptist Church and the city?
Yes.
That was, it was leased from First Baptist?
Right.
To the city?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And when did the lease run out?
It's yearly. Have to be renewed year.
But when, I'm assuming it's not still in place? So when, do you know when it ran out?
I don't know exactly. I know it hasn't, it's ran out since the, uh, fountain became inoperable. And that's been years. But we've had some people notice that the Pickens, City of Pickens spearheaded this, and they know that they came to me and previous mayor to see if we can do something about keeping that fountain going. And so that's why it was presented to the First Baptist by me. And that's how we got this draft.
Mr. Mayor, uh, question. So how is the water and the power to the meter supplied now, and who pays for that? Or, or was when it was being operated? Okay.
Yes, sir. It was supplied by the City of Pickens. Our waterworks people did all the work. It was other people in the community that did the brickwork. It was really a community-wide effort. Um, but the City of Pickens was the one that really run it, all the expenses that, if they were incurred, like the lights that are there now, um, the islands that are around it, uh, City of Pickens were the ones that provided that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead, council.
Did the First Baptist, did Pickens First Baptist Church ever have any sort of investment in the fountain, or were they just simply allowing the city?
Exactly.
That corner to do as the city wished with the fountain?
Right.
Originally? And there was?
From what I know.
Okay. And there was no agreement of upkeep or basically it's just the city has this corner to do what they wished in the beginning?
No, it was upkeep for the city to keep, keep it up. Um, the, the ball was dropped. The city was the one that's supposed to keep the fountain.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, so I think what, uh, Councilwoman Winter's comment was, I think, was the, the, um, the city was responsible for building it. They originally had an idea, they built it, they installed it, they were to maintain it. And now we're at a point where because it's not main, been maintained and it is in disrepair, the city would like to reestablish the fountain.
Yes.
Kind of in its former glory, so to speak, or at least have that kind of impact on the city. And we're just trying to work out the details to how that's gonna look going forward as far as the agreement with the, the church. And, and I take it that just simply a simple ground lease of that piece of land is too vague or too generic to actually, you know, to suit the church? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
They wanted to make it clear with the, what I just read.
Yes.
As far as the guidelines that we should have, because no agreement has been made for the future of, of that fountain. This is one of the steps toward making that agreement. They came with, I told them that we were interested in getting it back to its original glory. Then they said, okay, you can do that, um, but we've got some things we need to really discuss and some concerns that we have. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, was it present, was it a traditional ground lease presented to the church? Or were, did we present with any terms? Because there's nothing about a timeframe in this, so I'm assuming they're under the impression that this would be another year-to-year lease?
Oh, yes, it's gonna be a year-to-year.
There's no agreement for a longer-term lease?
No.
Okay.
Plus, it can be terminated at any time from what they want to have here.
Yeah.
Which is understandable, it's their property. What I want to really get established from the city council is do, do we want to do this? Now, I've had people come to me about it. I've got a, a brick there. Do you want the city to pay for getting it back, you know, restored and not have any ownership in it? Also, you need to talk to the lawyer and say, is it reasonable that, um, the municipality beautifies a church properly? Uh, we need to know all those type of things as a council. Um, now, I'm not trying to pour cold water on this, just like I said, I've got a brother with a brick up there. I, if I had the money in my pocket, I'd say, let's do it. But I want us to make sure that we protect the City of Pickens and we make the right decision about our taxpayer money. Um, that's where we're at. It's, it's really almost like renegotiating for the future. There's some concerns. Now, we'd be able to bring some other, uh, counter concerns for us to the Deacon Board. And I know they're willing to listen. Uh, I know the pastor and the deacons. Uh, it was Gil Stewart that was the chairman of the Deacon Board that, when they wrote this, but now Jeff Turner is the, um, chairman of the Deacon Board. They're good people that will, willing to work with us, but there's certain concerns they have as a church, and reasonably so, we understand that. But we ought to have some concerns as a city, a town, of what we want to really do in the future. That's up to you.
I think it's important to honor the people that originally had the, the memorial stones there, but in my opinion, I think that we should look into somewhere that's city property to have a fountain or some sort of beautification item that represents those people. I don't think that it's in the best interests of the city and of the taxpayers to continue to put money into a, a fountain that's going to take a lot to restore. It's currently, in my opinion, a health and safety issue the way it is. So I understand that, that, that's a separate problem, but, um, it's gonna take a lot of money to get that fountain going back to where it was. And in my opinion, if we're agreeing to put that type of money into something that can be pulled down or torn down in four months with no decision of ours, that seems irresponsible, in my opinion.
Anybody else have anything?
Well, I'll, I'll make a comment. Mr. Mayor, um, I, I like the idea of the partnership between the city and, and Pickens Baptist, um, First Baptist. I don't have a, I don't really have a problem with that. To, to me, the concern here, I think it's still cheaper to restore an existing structure than is to create a brand-new one unless the idea is to, to create something that's totally different and would be beyond the scope of what the church would permit, given this language. Uh, that I get. Um, but, um, the, uh, my, my concern as it is here written and as is proposed to work with the existing structure is simply the fact that there is not a, um, there needs to be a time for which the city can recoup its investment in repairing or restoring the fountain, so that year-to-year is, is fine, um, but year-to-year may not be good enough if, um, uh, you know, when, when you may, it may take quite a bit of money to do what needs to be done. And I'm not sure what the extent of the repairs that need to be done to the fountain are and how much that might be. And it may not be that much, maybe to do what we're talking about. And maybe then it doesn't matter as much if it's year-to-year or not, but it just seems, year-to-year seems a little, little short in terms.
I agree. I mean, we, it could be a five years or something with weight that we both connected, but if you put in fifty thousand dollars and, and there's a disagreement between the church and the city or whatever, and they, they want that down, they change their mind for all the money, and we have to take it down.
And, yeah, and we have to pay to take it down or remove it. Is there, is there a simpler, this is just consideration, throwing it out there, but would there be an idea to turn it into a little garden park fountain, not, maybe not fountain?
That was brought up by the pastor and he was talking, and he said, um, if we didn't make a decision, that's what they're gonna do.
Turn it into a garden area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we could probably fill that full of dirt and put a beautiful perennials or put annuals in there, but we would have to make sure that we have Trey and his crew, another job for them to do.
And, and, and that term we would still be continuing with, if they decided in ten years that they wanted to tear it out, they're gonna come back to the city and say, you need to pay to tear this out?
Yeah. But not anything that we'd be building. All we'd be doing is filling it full of dirt and putting in flowers. Now, we'd probably have to tear the existing that's already been built years ago. Um, I even talked about getting that facade as far as the bricks and, and moving them, but the way they've been put in, we would damage them more than it would be to try to preserve them. Um, I wanted to bring all information to council. It's not a decision that needs to be made, but we really need to talk about this because , uh, Pickens First Baptist wants to know what our intentions are, what, which path that we want to go. Um, I have a suggestion. The ones that brought up, and I won't, if I can get two volunteers from what we have here as council to help with the process of counter-talking to First Baptist about the concerns that we have as a council. What do y'all think about that?
You just tell us what you want.
I, I would like for us to do that, as, as far as, because you came up with some legitimate, um, points to help us move further, uh, I just think we need to really start the ball rolling and get our council. I don't wanna be just the one going talking to them. I want our council to be a part of this. I don't want our administrator to be the one to talk to them. I want our council to be more involved. Um, so I need two volunteers that be willing to talk to First Baptist. And, uh, if I don't get a volunteer.
Mr. Mayor, I'll volunteer.
All right.
Just thought I'd cut you off at the pass there.
Cause I was giving.
I could see it coming.
Draft was getting ready to go. And okay, since she didn't say anything, she's helping with downtown. Ms. Ally?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to.
Please work.
Absolutely.
With Mr. McManus and make sure that we get everything going. Now, it could be a beautiful thing. You could have a, of Japanese maple and, and beautiful flowers all around, um, it's things that can be done, but I want us to really let First Baptist that we want to have all good intent of working with them. Okay? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
We don't have to vote on it, um, but we, what we're gonna vote on is when we get a contract, get an agreement, a lease, and then we'll vote on that. Okay?
Okay.
Is everybody okay? Is anything else you wanna add to that? Subtract, multiply, divide?
So we'll probably just get with, um, the attorney first, John, and?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then talk, I'll give you Mr. A Deacon Jeff Turner's number, and that would be the first point of contact. You know, as far as a church, because I'm a minister, I would've wrote the same thing. You know, I wanna protect the church as much as possible and not, and I'm not down on this, but I'm also a mayor and knowing that some, certain things we have to do within the law and make sure that we're doing it right. Okay?
Very good.
Discussion on an ordinance as it relates to signage. Um, administrator, could you lead us in that discussion?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, regarding some changes, uh, based on a Supreme Court decision that we're gonna need to make to our codes as it relates to temporary signs and signage in general. Um, the, uh, case, and I cannot call the name of the case with this, right this minute, but, uh, it was fairly recent, and the Supreme Court ruled that, uh, communities cannot distinguish the purpose of a sign based on whether it's for a cobbler or a baker or a political candidate. So all sign rules have to say, this is about a sign, not the reason that you put the sign up. This is to protect the First Amendment rights of all concern. So essentially, our code, like lots of other communities, had, uh, lots of different rules about, this is what you do if you have a garage sale, this is what you do if you're running for mayor or city council or county council. Um, so that has been invalidated, uh, and is, uh, up for challenge. Essentially, the language change that will be needed is we will blend some things and we will basically treat every sign like a temporary sign. Um, the changes would allow, much like our rules now, uh, for a sign, whether it be for a rodeo or a campaign, to go up thirty days before the event, an election being an event, and it would be required to be removed within thirty days following the event. Um, but there can be no reference to, um, candidates or, or anything like that, if that makes sense. It's just, we're just gonna say, these are the rules for temporary signs, where they can be placed, um, along right-of-way's, uh, the timing of it, and there will be no separate chapter, uh, for political signs. This is something that, uh, our planner, Jennifer Visage, uh, has an initial draft that went out with your packet. Uh, I spoke to our city attorney today, and he's working with Jennifer. Um, eh, one thing that we've learned is this is actually an, an older version of our sign ordinance. It's not the one that's currently in place. So before it comes to council for a vote, uh, we just wanted to make you all aware of it, uh, and we should have it ready, uh, the attorney working with, uh, Jennifer to present you with a clean, uh, new, uh, sign code that comports to this Supreme Court decision.
Okay. So it's not really discussion, you just letting us know what order it took place. Does anybody have a discussion or any points that you'd like to talk about as far as signage is concerned? Uh, it's temporary signs, let's not forget that, not permanent signs, which is totally different. Yes, my- Yes, my counsel.
Just a couple of questions. I see where the timeframes have changed in the proposed ordinance. And in the omitted wording, I liked the fact that it specified the event of a runoff election. If we can't do that anymore because of the Supreme Court ruling, then I understand that. But that was just a point that I thought was useful in the old wording.
Yeah, I I think in in that case, and again, the attorney is really working on this, but the runoff would become a new event.
Okay, so you would have to, the way that this, if I think of this legitimately or in my mind, the way that it's worded, you would have to remove your sign for thirty days. That wouldn't work in the event of a runoff event, because you wouldn't have the time to remove it and then replace it in the same.
And we we brought that up in that, and that is a good point. But in my discussion with Daniel Hughes and Jennifer, it's all about an event. So it's thirty days before an event. Let's say your event, and we need flexibility, if your event got rained out and was postponed for for two weeks, which would be similar to a runoff, you move to the right the deadlines, and you're just reasonable because now now there's a runoff. So the event date has changed.
Okay, I guess I just liked the black and whiteness of the old wording.
Right.
It left a little room for people to guess. But if that could just be brought up with the attorney, is there a way that we can specify that without going against?
Oh, absolutely. And and this is, this is, you know, this is Pickens City Code, so council will make the final determination. Council could say, we don't care what the Supreme Court says, but that's never
That's not a good idea.
It's not usually a good idea. But yeah, it will be up for for you guys to weigh in on, and it does need some refinement based on what you see there. That's not the final version. This is just a kind of a heads up.
One other point that I saw under Section 608 in the proposed ordinance, number one, temporary signs can only can contain only the business name or the product of the business, with the exception of political signs. So if I read that again as a as a business person or just a resident, I can't have my phone or my contact info on there?
No, and I think that's, you know, share a list of whatever questions you have
Okay.
and copy Daniel on it, because we do need to get specific answers to that. I I think what that was trying to get to is more of a backwards way of saying you can't say some things on a sign, which is is exactly what the Supreme Court was saying. Either you have signs or you don't have signs. You don't, you don't get to weigh in on what they're for.
I would just want, that was just a point, I would, if I were a business, I would want my name and my phone number. And then just one more, sorry, on six, and I'm happy to send this, but since this is up for discussion, I may as well discuss it. An applicant cannot have more than five temporary signs in the city of Pickens at one time and must be located on the property of the business. Well, if this relates to political signs, then I think there should be a designation on that line in six that it's unless it's on private property. Because if you have signs on private property, you're gonna have way more than five in the city at one time. That's all.
Good, good, good point, and all of them.
Another thing along with signage, which is not related to this code, except its violations, which Councilman Wilson brought up to me earlier today. I want to make sure that everybody who travels through this community or does business near this community understands that it is a violation of law to stick signs in the ground at corners and to paste them on empty buildings. If anybody sees those, I would like for you to stop complaining about them and take them down.
You can't, you can't.
Yes.
You can lay the signs down. It's a misdemeanor to take them, according to the chief.
Yeah, well, it's it's a misdemeanor to put them up, so I guess two negatives cancel out. But we want everybody to be on notice that we're we're not gonna allow people to paste signs any more than they already do. And I will brave the misdemeanor, because I yank them down when I see them. But people need to be on notice that we're gonna start taking these numbers down and calling them. And we'll look at some ways that we can increase enforcement on that. Don't litter our town.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, Tim, can you explain to me, what is it we have in our packet that's actually current? There's a proposed ordinance sections, but you're saying that what we have is an old portion of the ordinance, it's not the current ordinance?
This was a call that I got this afternoon from, because this was with the planner and the attorney. And they have noted that this is not, and we, it wasn't up for a vote anyway. This is just the initial
But I want to know what I'm looking at is accurate, so I'm discussing the actual ordinance that we have now with proposed as opposed to an old version that isn't even the current language anymore. So I'm just making sure.
Not the current.
When I pulled it up online today, I I mean, it was very similar to what this says, but I didn't compare it word for word, but I did, I was able to pull it up online and search the sections referenced.
And that was just full disclosure, that the attorney said that there have been some minor revisions that he needed to work through with Jennifer. I pointed that out. Jennifer Visage?
Minor vi- minor changes to the current ordinance or minor changes to what he's proposing to be the current?
No, Jennifer had apparently a prior before some minor revisions was what she had started with. And then the attorney got involved and said, I need to present a newer version which reflects the current code. That was the exact content of the conversation when he called me today.
The current code? Which is what?
The current code?
Yeah. We don't have a current code?
No, not other than what we have here. They got to change all of this, and I think what was given to us tonight were just discussion points. This was an opportunity for us to discuss the certain things that are on here. We don't have anything that's that we're gonna be able to present to council and vote on as far as an ordinance is concerned, because that's what the attorney has to draft for us. This is just opportunity to get our feet wet with the knowledge of what the whole code was, I mean, whole ordinance was. And then when we get the revised one, we can look at that as far as being a tool to vote for our new ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I think that underlying one of the questions is that another issue similar to audits, and our clerk has been working on this, is that there was some period of time, like lots of things, where the codification of our ordinances in the early twenties were delayed. So very often, the attorney may have a record of some minor change that was approved, but it has not gone to MUNI code. So I guess that could be the confusion, is when I look up the code or you look up the code, we see it and go, well, that's the code. But apparently, and and Donna is working with the the MUNI code people, we've been sending them rafts of things as we try to get caught up. So yeah, it confuses me too sometimes that I'm like, well, how am I supposed to know that this has changed because it was never reflected? So we're trying to clean that as well, along with everything else.
What I want to know is, because we're talking about making changes to a code, but we don't know that the code I'm looking at in writing is the actual current code, because there were changes made to it that were never put on the MUNI code.
You're exactly right. I now understand your question better, and I share your frustration. The the only reason that, see, Daniel had some file where he said, oh, that was changed. And I'm like, well, when, where? So exactly the same thing, so.
Okay.
And I'm glad you were part of this, because now we're gonna be able to get these codes and ordinances and everything straight to where we can get them codified. We have a good clerk. She tries to look serious right now, but she's helping us really get it codified.
And we did have a lot of conversation. We budgeted additional funds this year, and it's just a matter of sorting through. And part of the problem is, and Donna, you can help me out whenever you want to. It's not like there's a pile where it goes, oh, we just need to send it to them and then you need to update it. It's like a lot of things we're trying to clean up. We've got to figure out what was changed and when. So it's a little bit of a forensic process.
And I I will call Daniel tomorrow, because I've noticed that Jennifer does have Supplement 14, which does go through 2024. So I think there really only might be a minor change, because what we have in now is Supplement 15. That probably was updated about a month back.
Yeah.
We are current in MUNI code here. So if there's something in Supplement 14, it is probably a very minor change.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
They will be correcting the typos in the ordinance.
See the rush, didn't?
Yeah.
They want to rush and get it to the council.
Highlight it if you would like that.
Attorneys charge more for that.
Give it to the paralegal.
Yeah, all right. Comments from council? I'd like to start off by informing council and asking your opinion on moving forward dealing with our salary study. I was the one that caused us not to have it, because I was sick. And Mandy was sick, and that's the money lady. So we we we're back on track, and we want to really reschedule this if we can tonight. That would be best for everybody involved. I know we have councilmen that that work. We probably have to do it in the evenings, because it's not gonna be a late notice as far as getting it rescheduled. What I'd like to do is, can we reschedule it hopefully this week?
This year, this week?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because we really need to move forward, because we got to talk to our department heads.
Yeah, that was what my my comment was gonna be. If we do an evening this week, will department head be able to make it?
We're gonna ask department heads to be there, yes. We need that, because we want their input so that we can go ahead and move further and get this behind us. Because we made promises, we said we were going to do this, and we hadn't been able to, time constraints. It's now time to get busy and go ahead and make sure that we can get our employees, the ones that are going to be getting raises, and just get everything in place. I talked to Councilman Rogers, who can't be here. He he's very sick with the flu. But he said that he was ready for to move further, so we'd probably put him on conference call if we do it this weekend, he can't get here. I can't speak for Councilman Rogers. What I'm saying is, I'd like to do it as soon as possible, but I want to make sure that we all can be there. If we can't, we'll do it as soon as we can. That's where I'm at. Because it was my fault that we couldn't finish that stage or that phase, because all y'all obviously, I can't be made off the field.
But now we've got one sick at least, plus possibly a department head sick. So is this week really feasible for other people that can't? You know?
Yeah, you got a point there. If we got that many people sick, this is just
I mean, I agree, like, I I really want to get it done, but if we schedule it again and then have to cancel it.
Okay. Because of illness, you want us to go for the following week?
That's just a thought. I mean, we already know that there's two that have the flu, so.
Okay, let's let's agree on the time. Six, six thirty. Can you make it a six?
Could need to.
Okay. What about?
Six is fine.
All right, and we got the time now. Now let's see when we're gonna do it. February is the tenth. Washington's birthday is the seventeenth. Closed, yep. And so it's eighteenth through the twenty first.
Or what about the end of this week? We can't really ask everybody to come in at six o'clock on the fourteenth.
No, that that this, no, this week is out, because you got sick people. We're talking about the following week.
The following week?
Eighteenth through the twenty first. Now, the twentieth is a national holiday. February the twentieth, we can't be here, because that's my birthday. No.
What about?
Sixty-two. Where is the train?
What about your work session?
We got a work session the twenty fourth.
We're not gonna be here. Oh, that's in March, yeah. What about the work session, the twenty fourth?
You want to add it to the work session, or you want it?
Yeah, make that the work session.
Is that gonna be an executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
To meet with our department.
To meet with our department heads, correct. In addition to the work session items or just that one thing?
I think it's gonna be that one thing. Wouldn't you agree?
I've got something that I would like to talk about in a work session, but.
Well, we'll put that on. Just let me know. And we can handle that beforehand and then go into executive session.
So are we thinking, we're thinking of moving this to next week and not having our work session on the twenty fourth? Is that what I'm following?
That's what would happen if we did go next week.
Okay.
But we can wait until the twenty fourth, which is the work session.
We could do the eighteenth, that's the day after President's Day. We could do not the twentieth, right?
No, I'm just kidding, you can have it. I have no problem.
I don't, I mean.
Well, I I I'd vote for the eighteenth. I'm gonna vote for the eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
The evening, the evening of the eighteenth.
I can't, I'll be out. It's a day after holiday. We're closed on Monday, so Tuesday I'll be, I may be able to make it, but I won't know until five o'clock that afternoon.
Well, then what about the twenty?
With the mail on that day.
Or the nineteenth, nineteenth?
The nineteenth, yeah.
That's so Wednesday, Wednesday, the nineteenth. How's that?
I I mean, I have commitments on Wednesday evenings. I can, like, this is the thing, do we, can we send out a survey for everybody and find a date that everybody works? Because we're missing two people's input.
Okay.
If we decide, I mean, I'm just
I'll tell you what, let's say tentatively, right now, let's pencil in the twenty fourth, our work session.
That's already, yeah, that's on.
So that's already on then.
Yeah.
Let's leave that wrong. Matter of fact, let's just make it the twenty fourth. If you have time to heal, we can do it then, okay? Y'all all right? You plan on being here anyway?
I definitely, I'm fine with the twenty fourth. I just, I do understand wanting to get it done as soon as possible. I just don't know how we're gonna.
Then if anything changes, I can have an official call, I can just call.
I think it's gonna take longer, it's gonna take a minute. It's not gonna be a short session.
Right.
So this, you're gonna be out. Get one more.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments you'd like to share with us tonight? Any concerns? If not, I would like a motion for number ten, adjournment. Can I have a mo- oh, you wanna stay here? Can I make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, in celebration of your birthday coming up on the twentieth, I'll make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
I will second that motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. You got yours up? Okay.